You're recording.
We record in this pen. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Let the scanner start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, your presentation from Exelon.
I don't know where they are.
I think she might be outside.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What?
Two minutes.
Okay, two minutes. All right, we can go on to the...
Can we go on to...
We'll skip Jim too, because he's gonna be longer than two minutes.
How about Rotary Club of Fork River Tony?
Tony will be quick. Maybe, yeah, two minutes.
Your dog. I'm Tony Engone, this is Donna Holtz, and we're here to invite the committee and the mayor to be our judges for the Doggie Derby contest that we have. Doggie Derby is June third this year, on Sunday, Donna?
Sunday from eleven to three. We're going to have a lot of fun festivities for the kids. There's Home Eco's gonna be there, and then we'll let the kids like build and play things, and there's gonna be a bounce house, and we have... WBNJ?
WBNJ's gonna be there.
They're gonna be there. So, last year it was great. He did some great music and some entertainment with it.
It's more than a doggie derby. It's a doggie derby slash fun day for the family, families of Lacey Township. This thing is grown. This is our sixth annual doggie derby, and every year it just gets bigger and bigger. We've been adding more too. So, it's a fun day for the entire family, and we hope that, you know, people come out and participate and support us. Because Rotary, as you know, is an international organization. We have one point two million members throughout the world. And as a local club, our focus is mostly on our community. The things that we want to do is support our community and do a lot of good things, hopefully for the community. We do the Elf Program, don't we?
We do the Elf Program. It's where we play Santa. Years ago, we used to go past the house. Now, we hold it in the Knights of Columbus, and we go buy toys for the children, and they come, their parents get on a bike, they come, they're on a list, and they come and they shop, and it's Christmas for them.
We spend somewhere around thirty thousand dollars just on the Elf Program and the Thanksgiving Program as well. In addition to that, we've supported the town by, you know, doing the renovations on some of our parks. So, we do a lot of good things for the community, keep our ear to the ground wherever there's a need, and hopefully with your help.
With the Elf Program, though, I do also want to mention that it's more than just a Rotary effort, because we do get the other members of the community involved. The Moose always helps out, the Food Bank helps out, and of course, Ware Town or Ocean Township and Lacey PBAs also help out and give us monetary donations for us to go and do the shopping. And of course Walmart gives us a shopping day there and gives us very fair prices for that.
We get a grant from Walmart for twenty-five hundred dollars every year to add to the money that we collect. And with the Doggie Derby, though, it's gonna be a great day, because we're gonna have demonstrations as well as the contests. We're gonna have the Kunsong Karate School. They're gonna do a demo for us. The Sheriffs Department's gonna do the drone demonstration, plus they're bringing their canine with them to do a demo. Ware Town is bringing the canine dogs as well to do a demo on the field as well. We're gonna have over forty vendors. Right now, we're up to about forty-two, forty-three, and we're still getting phone calls. Even though it's a week away, we have more people who wanna come on for it. So, we'll give you a good variety of vendors there for people to shop and enjoy. We're gonna have food trucks, we're gonna have all kinds of food, desserts. It's gonna be a fun day.
Yeah, it's very entertaining.
So, can we count on you to be our judges?
Yes.
Tony, I just have my question, because the first year I had judged, I guess six years ago, I don't think any of these guys were there. I know I had the contest was the best kissing club.
You were great.
As the senior member of this governing body, I would like to be able to choose the person on the committee that does that.
If you mind, I'm gonna nick anyone.
You had my mind.
Right, Stephen?
I just want to say something, you know, because you've touched on so many things, but, you know, Donna, you know, Tony, Veronica, you're all members. You've only touched on a very small amount of what you've done. Haven't even talked about scholarships, the thousands of dollars you do every year, you know, at around this time of year to the kids, helping them go to college. You know, Rotary has been such a, you know, major part of this community for... Tony, you've got to be there thirty-five years at least at this point. And, you know, it's just done so much good for this community. Rotary Park over in Gilly, you know, without the money that you folks raised and, you know, donated to the township, we wouldn't have been able to build that park. So, you deserve so much credit, all you members over the years, the members you have now. Please go back and thank everyone, you know. I mean, we get a lot of information. Veronica keeps us up to speed on things. She makes sure she sells us tickets for the functions as they come up.
Go for the gold, they know it. It's sitting on my desk.
Yeah, we will make our donations.
I have tickets.
So do I.
Well, actually, Donna, I've never won with Veronica, so call me on Monday.
I don't care who he buys the prize.
Tony, unfortunately, I'm gonna be away that weekend, so if I wasn't away, I would be definitely.
Dogs really don't like him. They bite him.
I think last year, I thought I heard I won, but I didn't see it.
What, the go for the gold?
I think maybe somebody took it.
Wait, two years ago, you won some of them.
I did. Maybe it was two years.
Yeah, I think your wife took it. I think your wife took it.
Somebody said something.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you next Sunday.
Thank you.
And don't forget, on Monday, the club is putting out their flags along all the major routes on Lacey Road and Route nine.
Right.
So, that would look wonderful on Monday for the parade.
The little club at Walmart, they're taking thirty-six flags.
That's great.
Hundred dollars' worth of flags.
Great job. Thanks, everybody.
Good. Thank you.
All right, Suzanne, Tim, would you like to join us up front?
Good evening. My name's Tim Moore. I'm the site vice president at Oyster Creek Nuclear Generating Station. And I just like here to let you know, for many years, the Oyster Creek employees have proudly served their community and worked tirelessly. They provide donations and support the community out in the field. And I'm here as a representative of those employees and proud to present the township with a check for ten thousand dollars to once again support the fireworks display and be a signature sponsor of the Fourth of July celebration in the township. I know that we've done that since two thousand and eleven, and I'm very pleased and proud that we're able to do that again this year.
Thank you.
Nick, you wanna go through the check?
Go leave the check. Jim, you don't have for Maggie, camera picture? Thank you, perfect.
I do.
Yeah, I should know better, right?
And we do have one additional gift for the township. We have made some donations of AEDs in the past to some of our local stakeholders. And we did come across two additional AEDs that we wanna provide to the township as well, so we'll bring that gift as well.
Thanks, Tim.
Perfect. Oh, yeah, yeah, including the latter. Perfect.
Helps the big man's cat.
What just a notice that came out? They kind of seem random or high.
Thank God for iPhones.
Plan B. You guys are doing good.
It doesn't say. No, we're already at the end. There will be curves. Recyclables, I'm surprised.
Sue, or Tim, the education center, when is that open?
Um, the Hall of Memories?
Yeah.
Open by appointment, so if anybody wants to come and see if they can. But then we've got Community Information Night is Monday, June eight, from four-thirty PM to seven.
And that, the hall, that's all, that was brand new. That was all today?
Yes.
What time is it on June eighteen?
Four-thirty PM to seven thirty. And for those of you up there who didn't get a chance to come today, our Hall of Memories is a museum-like exhibition that really is a celebration of the history of Oyster Creek, the legacy that we leave behind, and the impact that we've made on the community. It's a neat little museum. It's a nice little tribute to...
Yeah, I did change it. I thought it was pretty interesting seeing some of the old, you know, the old stock footage of the plan as it's being constructed. And a lot of the other different things that have gone on at the plan over the years.
And we'd love to show it off, so if any of you wanna come by, please.
Sue, have you been in contact with the Historical Society? Are they gonna take all that over when the plan eventually?
We have been in contact with the Historical Society. They're very interested in, you know, taking some of the items and displays that we have.
Okay.
So, we will keep in contact with them, you know, over the years, until such point that we, you know, we close the doors of the museum, and then we'll keep it going.
Yeah, Tim had said this morning that there was three different historical groups that have interest in it, so at some point, everything will be put out somewhere.
Yes.
What are the other two historical groups?
Ware Town.
Oh, okay.
Also, the Tuck County, but we're also going to work with the OSHA County Library and the OSHA County Historical Society.
Oh, yeah, good, good.
There's quite a large collection of items.
I can imagine. I can't imagine.
We'd love to see the legacy and history of Oyster Creek go on forever for anyone to see in twenty, thirty years from now, under its grass.
And with the traffic we have in Town Hall, maybe it's possible to have some token items in here as well.
We would love to do that. Yeah, we would love to do that.
Go ahead, you can do it.
There is one thing I would like, the legacy to live on and you to stay. That would be a dream.
That's great. Lacey EMS is going to be accepting those AEDs. I've already asked them if they needed them, and they said they do, so they're very appreciative of that.
Wonderful.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You guys can leave if you'd like to. You don't have to stick around. You've had a long day already.
Yes.
Enjoy your evening.
Yeah, you too. Thank you again. Yes, yes, I'm with you this weekend.
Recreation Department, Jim Wyler.
You got a check to present too, Meg?
I have a pitch.
Joe, Joe, I've been taking some heat, so I wanna clear the air. You requested to come back again, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you're bailing them out, buddy. You're bailing them out. We were lobbying for a new liaison for you tonight.
The, well, thank you for having me back. Last time I was here, we talked a little bit about summer camp and all the different, you know, parts of that and all the new changes with summer camp. But I know Rotary has stepped out, but we are gonna be attending the Doggie Derby, so if anyone's interested. We have a really cool project for kids that's gonna be going on there. We're gonna be recycling some of our old camp shirts, and we're gonna be converting them into reusable shopping bags. So, if you are attending the Doggie Derby, and you have kids stop by our table, we'll keep them busy for a little bit, and they'll get to walk away with a really cool craft project. So, we're really excited, looking forward to that. It's gonna be great, gonna meet more of the community that we may not have seen in a while, so. That being said, we're really excited about this year, as we talked about last time. We have lots of, you know, new programs, events. It's gonna be a really busy summer. We're gonna keep everybody active and going strong. One of the things that we're really proud of is our farmer's market, and I'm here tonight with Margaret Jones. She is taking over being our onsite coordinator for the farmer's market, so she's been coordinating with all the farmers and the vendors, and she's gonna talk a little bit about the changes. And I'm gonna bring her up, so Maggie, come up.
Okay, so we have a new start date this year. We're starting early. We start June eighth, and we're extending it all the way through October fifth. And in, on November nineteenth, we're also gonna be having a fall market, so you can go come shopping for Thanksgiving. And then one thing that we have this year are reusable shopping bags. They're insulated, and they have a zipper on top. We'll be selling them at the market for five dollars. And we will also be having free craft days, cooking demos. And we have new food truck, Dax Dippers. They do grilled meats and fruits on sticks. And we have a smoothie vendor, and we have all of our old vendors coming back. I think we have about fourteen or fifteen vendors coming this year so far, so we're excited.
That's great.
I get really excited about the farmer's market, because we've grown so much. We took it over four years ago, maybe, we had five or six vendors. But we've been able to take it, grow it, bring more people in, and really try, we're trying to make it more of a destination. So, when people come, they get a chance to see all types of unique specialty foods, get a chance to experience some culinary demos. We've got tons of recipe cards at our table code. When you stop by, stop by the recreation table, pick up recipes, all the ingredients you can find at the market. It's always fun. Try to try something new, to go home with your family, with your kids, try a new recipe, cook together, eat together, promote healthy living. When the kids come, it's special for them. We have a really cool program for them, where they come and they get a couple clues, and they have to figure out what it is that we're looking for. It's called Who Am I? So, they may get some clues like, I am red, I'm full of antioxidants, I'm delicious, I'm sweet. And they have to go and talk to the farmers and find out what we're talking about. If they get the right answer, they can put their name into a drawing, pull some fun gifts throughout the summer to give out to the kids. So, it's something to keep them invested, because we want them eating healthy. We want them, you know, promoting healthy living, so. It's just a really great program. I love it. I love being a part of it. I love, you know, getting my produce there, and my kids will, you know, eat me out of house and home just walking through the market. But it's fun, and they enjoy it, and they get to taste something that was growing on a vine sometimes just a few hours before the market. Because most of our farmers, they all pick that morning, so it's a fun time. So, we're Fridays, Lacey United Methodist Church parking lot, eleven to five. And like Maggie said, we did get so much request to start the market early, so we were starting as early as June eighth, which is two weeks earlier than normal, and going all the way through October, you know, the beginning of October. And then the biggest request we had was to bring the market back for Thanksgiving, so we have a specialty Thanksgiving market that's gonna take place in the Monday of Thanksgiving week, so. Fourteen vendors, we're full. We've got smoothie trucks. We've got food trucks that do grilled meats and skewers, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. So, come check it out every Friday. We have a Facebook page, so all of our updates are there, who's there, who's in attendance, who's not. That way, if you're looking for something special, you know ahead of time before you make the trip, so. Maggie, thank you very much for bringing that. And those bags are available, five dollars per bag. You know, so if you need an insulated, you know, cooling shopping bag to take all your stuff home with you for the market, stop by our table. We'd be more than happy to sell it to you, so. In addition to the market, we've got lots of different things going on. We've got concerts, movies, you know, National Night Out. There's a lot going on that we're working with a lot of different organizations in town. I'm really lucky. I have a wonderful recreation team. Maggie's here as part of that team tonight. I've got, you know, more people in the office tonight. We have an event tomorrow, so they're prepping for it. Tomorrow night, we have a fifth and sixth grade dance, Hawaiian Lula, over at Mill Pond. So, if you guys are around and wanna stop by, we'll have quite a few kids out on the beach having a good time, so. But, any questions for me?
Yeah, I got some questions.
How many kids have we signed up for the summer camp program so far?
Uh, we're right around two hundred and fifty kids, so it's moving right along. We anticipate a move over six hundred.
So, the rush, the rush is coming up, you think?
The rush is coming up, yeah. As we get closer to that deadline where the price increases, where the early bird discount.
The early bird, what's the price right now?
Right now, it's a hundred and thirty dollars, and that includes your four t-shirts and your pizza party and registration to camp, so.
And once camp starts and they wanna register?
Hundred eighty.
Hundred eighty dollars.
So, take advantage of that fifty dollar discount. It does make, it makes, you know, makes a difference if you got multiple kids.
And you made the changes. The trips are now on Friday, so it's basically all week long.
Well, we've got four Friday trips, and they're long distance, and, yeah, they're gonna be on charter buses. Every trip that we have is gonna include much. It's gonna be a longer day, so parents, you know, will be leaving for nine o'clock. So, parents will be able to get to the park by forty-five and drop off. We probably will be back till about four thirty, so. But, yeah, it should be a lot of fun. It's, we're slowly trying to expand as many directions as we can to provide as much service to the community as possible.
And I see, see, we have our Thursday night under the pavilion. That's a new one, so let's.
This is a new program, yeah. We have, we have the opportunity, the pavilion is such a beautiful spot at Gilly Park. There's so many people in the park in the evening, and last year, we did an event where we turned the lights on under the pavilion, and we just realized how nice the spot is. So, we talked, and, you know, we decided to do some concerts under the pavilion on Thursday nights. Now, two of those concerts are really gonna be geared for our young people, our teens that wanna play music, so we're gonna have open mic nights, where they can come, sign up. Right, you know, we're gonna have all the equipment. They all have to bring their own instrument. They can plug in and play. And I think that's gonna be really cool. It's gonna give our kids a creative outlet where they can express themselves in this environment. We have other musicians. We have a jazz group. We have acoustic group, but there's gonna be some other musicians that are gonna be playing there throughout the summer as well. So, we have five dates scheduled throughout the summer, and they're all on our summer event schedule that you guys have got. We also have our concerts at Deerhead. We have a concert in Bamber scheduled. We're gonna have Honey Spot Boulevard out at Bamber. Fantastic group. It's a really interesting mix of funk and bluegrass. I think it's gonna go really well. You know, that's going out there, and, you know, we have our Parrot Beach, which is a tribute to Jimmy Buffett. That's gonna be out on the beach in July over at Deerhead. And then we were wrapping up with a local classic rock band here in town called Sketchy Medicine, and they're gonna be playing over at Deerhead as well, obviously, so.
And July third, the fireworks concert, right?
Fireworks, yes, generously sponsored by our good friends at Exelon. They come through for us year after year, and, you know, it's a fantastic event. It's one of the true events where the town stops. You know, people are at the high school, at the middle school, at Gilly Park, lining Lacey Road, parts of Route nine, you know, wherever you can catch a glimpse. People stop for that fifteen, twenty minutes, and they wanna watch and enjoy and celebrate our independence, so it's really a great opportunity, so we're excited about that.
And then we have the Grand Rio Green of Puffy Wallace?
Puffy Wallace Park. We finally have a date for that, July fourteenth. It's a Saturday. We are inviting all of our young people, all our youngsters. We're gonna try to break a record. We're gonna have the largest play date. You know, so we have some people lined up to be there. We're also gonna host a softball game between our PD and our fire department, so we're excited about that. And just making a family atmosphere out of the park, so. But it should be a fun-filled summer.
And I emailed Jim. I said to Jim, I said, you know, gotta send me the dates that I need to be attending these things, so I can fill out my calendar.
You lose them, that's your problem.
Lo and behold. Here it is right here. You know, we guarantee you're gonna have something to do this summer, right, for our kids?
Absolutely.
If they can't find anything to do with their kids.
Short of going to people's homes and walking them by hand to the events, there is gonna be a lot going on, so people will have their, you know, the opportunity to come out and be a part of it. It's a great community, and I love living here, love working here, so.
And Lacey Fest is when?
Lacey Day is gonna be the end of September, September twenty ninth, last Saturday of September, so we're just starting to planning on that.
Okay.
All right.
And we have a band for that, right? You gotta finish the date up?
Well, you know, we're working on donations, so.
Oh, okay.
You know, we'll see how far we get, but we're gonna do our best.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Request to post signs, Relay for Life.
Okay, as you know, Relay for Life, Lacey Berkeley, is being held in the near future on May twenty-sixth. No, excuse me, I'm sorry, June ninth and tenth, they would like to start putting up signs as of this coming Saturday, May twenty-sixth. I just need approval to do so.
Move.
Second. Call it a favor?
Aye.
I have nothing to add on to this agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
You got it.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act pursuant to public law of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Would like to have a salute to the flag at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash seventeen, amending chapter ninety-three of the code as to provide for the position of Class Three Special Law Enforcement Officer.
In order to township Lacey County of OSHA State in New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter ninety-three of the township code entitled Police Department so as to create the position of not special law enforcement officer Class Three. Legislation was recently passed on last year with regards to the position of what is called a Class Three Special Law Enforcement Officer. What those Class Three individuals are, they are officers of this class are exercised, are authorized to exercise full powers and duties similar to those of a permanent regularly appointed police officer while providing security at a public or non-public school on the school premises during hours when the public or non-public school is normally in session or when it is occupied by the public or non-public school students or teachers. While on duty in the jurisdiction of employment, a Class Three officer may respond to offenses or emergencies off school property if they occur in the officer's presence while traveling to the school facility. But an officer shall not otherwise be dispatched or dedicated to any other off school property assignment. And again, these are retired former police officers. There are regulations within the laws to how far out retired they can be and what their break of service is and their age at the time of appointment. And this is to assist within the schools, not for anything else. Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. First reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash eighteen, setting the salaries for the Class Three Special Law Enforcement Officers.
In order to township Lacey County of OSHA State in New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, in order to township Lacey County of OSHA State in New Jersey, fixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body in the township. This salaries creates the Class Three officers per hour. First year of service is twenty-five dollars, second year is twenty-six, third year is twenty-seven, fourth year is twenty-eight, fifth year is twenty-nine, and six years and beyond is thirty dollars per hour. And these individuals will, are seasonal. They're a year-to-year appointment, and they only work during the school year.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash fifteen, amending chapter three twenty-three, vehicles and traffic so as to establish stop intersections.
In order to township Lacey County of OSHA State in New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three twenty-three of the township code entitled Vehicles and Traffic so as to amend section three twenty-three dash twenty-eight entitled Schedule Five Stop and Yield Intersections so as to provide for additional stop and yield intersections in township of Lacey. The stop signs that we're adding is Hollywood Boulevard North-South and Hollywood Boulevard. We're adding a stop sign on Hollywood Boulevard as you come in to the entrance, and you would either go north or south, there would be a stop intersection. Calvin Street, there at the intersection with Newark, there will be a stop sign on Calvin Street, and Trenton Avenue North, there will be a stop sign on Calvin Street. Second reading, open the floor.
Second reading, open it up to the floor.
Jessica, there's a, there's another intersection that in my view is a stop sign over by Station Road. Is that not for a...
Yeah, no, it has to be what's actually in this morning. So, we're bringing it up during the regular public.
Okay.
Just can you look for the comments? The floor, close the floor. Second.
Call it a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Second reading. Second reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash sixteen, to create chapter two seventy-nine, repairing zone.
In order to the township Lacy County of Ocean State and Jersey, amending and supplementing the township code to create chapter two seventy-nine entitled Repairing Zone. The purpose of this ordinance is to ensure that owners of developers of lands within the township are aware of the repairing zone requirements of the Flood Hazard Control Act rules. In accordance with the requirements, no person shall engage in a regulated activity in a regulated area of a regulated water without a flood hazard area authorization or permit as required by state law. Um, so this is basically part of our plan endorsement, um, application process. These are some of the ordinances that the township is required to put into place with regards to the application pending before the Office of State Planning. Uh, this has been reviewed by the DEP. It has also been reviewed and, um, voted on by the planning board. Second reading?
Second reading, open it up to the floor. Seasonal motion, pause.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash one forty-three, appointing a Class Two Special Law Enforcement Officer.
Resolution, township Lacy County of Ocean State and Jersey, appointing Matthew Edwards as a Class Two Special Law Enforcement Officer. Matthew was currently one of our Class One Special Law Enforcement Officers. He put himself through training at the Ocean County, uh, Police Academy. Uh, he graduated just, um, on Thursday, well, May seventeenth, and we are now recognizing him in his new position as a Class Two.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash one forty-four, authorizing the sale of tax anticipation notes.
Resolution, township Lacy County of Ocean State and Jersey, authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of tax anticipation notes of the township of Lacy in the county of Ocean. This is an annual resolution that we adopt with regards to tax anticipation notes. Um, we go out annually. At this time of the year, since the state has stopped, um, providing the, uh, energy tax receipts at, at an earlier timeframe, uh, we have a cash flow issue, uh, so we do go out, um, to, uh, issue tax anticipation notes. Uh, a lot of times, other towns do give us, um, borrowing power from their surpluses. Uh, most likely, it will be Wes Windsor again that will bid on this at a very, very reasonable rate.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty seventeen dash one forty-five, authorizing an amendment to the contract for the Railroad Right-of-Way Project.
Resolution, township Lacy County of Ocean State and New Jersey, authorizing execution of amendment to the contract with PNA Construction for the Railroad Avenue Extension Project Phase One. This is change order number three, and it's actually a decrease in the amount of twenty-six thousand dollars. We're almost at final quantity, closeouts, um, but this was a decrease based on some changes and some savings that we had throughout the, uh, contract that we had to change things.
I'd like to move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash one forty-six, authorizing the reduction of a performance guarantee for Seabreeze at Lacy Phase Two C.
Resolution, township Lacy County of Ocean State and Jersey, authorizing reduction of a site improvement performance guarantee for Seabreeze at Lacy Phase Two C conditioned upon the posting of a new performance guarantee. This has been reviewed and approved by the township engineer, and, uh, we are reducing, uh, the, uh, initial performance bond, uh, which was at one point three million, down to four hundred and five thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash one forty-seven, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution, township Lacy County of Ocean State and New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it, second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Resolution twenty eighteen dash one forty-eight, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution, township Lacy County of Ocean State and New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of one million, sixty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to appro, approve caucus meeting minutes of May tenth, twenty eighteen.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of May tenth, twenty eighteen.
Move it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do have an add-on this evening. It's gonna be an ordinance, first reading of ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash nineteen. And, uh, this is, uh, in order to the township Lacy County of Ocean State and New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter two ninety-one entitled Stormwater Regulations for Non-Pine Lines Areas So As To Amend Various Sections. This, again, is another ordinance related to the plan endorsement application, which is part of the, um, process in order for us to, uh, be presented before the State Planning Commission, and it's to protect the quality of the waters of the Barnacle Bay and waterways that flow within its borders to the bay, and proposes changes to stormwater management regulations to include the new regulations within urban redevelopment areas to reduce stormwater runoff from previously developed sites. First reading, motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have to add on.
That's it.
Yep.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor, Tim McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanna say that the Memorial Day Parade, uh, scheduled for Monday, is still on at this point in time. Hopefully the weather will hold, and it starts at, huh?
Uh, yes.
Starts at ten o'clock, uh, and then the ceremony starts at eleven o'clock, so, uh, it's a, it's always a tough day, uh, to remember those who, uh, laid down their lives so that we can have the freedoms that we have. So, uh, as, as we celebrate it this, this, uh, weekend, take a moment and just pause and be very, very thankful. Um, and I don't know if anybody saw it, uh, I saw it out there on Facebook, that the backwards flag, uh, owner is a veteran, and CBS came down and did a, uh, interview with her. I don't know when it's gonna be shown or where it's gonna be shown, but I thought that was, that was kind of, uh, neat. Uh, I'm sure it has to do with memorial day. Um, moving on to some recreation things. Farmer's Market starts, uh, June eighth, we just heard about. Also, uh, Jim didn't talk about this, is, uh, Friday Night Lights, which is, the skate park will be open at night, the police are there, and the kids have a good time. It's already had, it already had four of them, but, uh, June first is the next one, and then we keep it closed till September seventh, so that's, uh, uh, what else is going on there? Um, I think that's, that's all, all I, all I have, Mayor.
Committee man? Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna be a little repetitive. I have some, uh, announcements here from the chief that he asked me to make. Um, of course, the first one deals with exactly what, uh, Tim was just talking about, the skate park. The next Gillie, uh, Park Skate Park Evening Event, also known as Friday Night Lights, will be held Friday evening, June first, two thousand and eighteen, at six P.M. He gave me a little more of all the information. Uh, the skate park
You're right.
Will be open from six P.M. until ten P.M. with a live DJ playing music starting at seven P.M. Lighting will be provided by Lacy Police Department with the assistance of our, uh, local fire departments. In addition, the Lacy Police Department, Lacy Township EMS, and the Oklahoma Harbor EMS will all be on scene. The event, uh, will also include a mobile gaming trailer from seven P.M. to nine P.M. Age-appropriate games will be available for the kids. The skate park is specifically for the use of skateboard, scooters, and inline skates. Bicycles are not permitted. Uh, all users are required to wear a helmet in the skate park at all times and follow all the posted skate, uh, park rules, and the event is free of charge for all residents. Uh, next Saturday, uh, June second, um, we're having our annual Meet the Officer Day, uh, for the Lacy Township Police Department, uh, Lacy PBA two thirty-eight, and the Lacy Municipal Police Foundation, uh, will be hosting it over at the Lacy Middle School from ten A.M. till two P.M. Uh, this indoor event will include food, refreshments, DJ, games, and giveaways. Activities will include face painting, boardwalk style games, a huge inflatable slide, uh, and many more events for the kids. Families are encouraged to bring their children to meet the police officers and the staff of the Lacy Township Police Department. The Meet the Officer Day event is part of the ongoing cop collectible card program that's been going on for the last month and a half. Uh, each officer will have their own specific cop collectible card with them. Uh, the event will offer prizes, including but not limited to bicycles and an iPad. Uh, participating students will have, uh, will be able to have their collection confirmed and turn in their completed and verified forms. The completed and verified forms will render a student eligible for the grand prize drawing, which will be conducted at the prize ceremony scheduled, uh, at each participating school in June. Uh, that would be the Milpon School, the Oklahoma Harbor School, Cedar Creek School, and Fork River Elementary. Blank checklist will be available the day of the event. If you have any, any questions, reach out to Detective, uh, Chris Cornelius at six nine three, uh, six six three six, extension two five six six. Uh, and, and for the kids that haven't gotten their cards, the businesses around town, uh, still have enough cards if you wanna get out there and, and go around and knock it on the doors and, uh, get cards. Uh, I know my office, I have the chief's card, and I still have a bunch of them left, so, uh, I keep telling the chief, he's not the most popular police officer in the world, so. If you need a card, come on by, so. Um, I, I just wanna, uh, talk about for a minute, uh, every year we, we have, uh, the Police Unity Tour, which is a bicycle, uh, you know, event that, uh, police officers ride basically from, from different parts of the, uh, state down to, uh, Washington, D.C. Uh, and we had it again. It just took place, uh, uh, two weeks ago, and we had five members of our Lacy Police Department that participated in the, uh, Unity Tour to D.C. this year. Uh, it started on March ninth, and it went through until, uh, May twelve, I'm sorry, May ninth till, uh, May twelve, but it's a long time, Mark.
Yes.
You're still riding, man.
But, uh, on Wednesday morning, uh, May ninth, two thousand and eighteen, um, Detective Sam Bella Sala, uh, Brian Flynn, along with officers Adam U, uh, Ewart, Andrew Sloan, and Brian Holt, uh, all joined more than five hundred riders and participants from chapters ten and thirteen at the Monmouth County Police Academy in New Jersey, which was the starting point of the annual trek to, uh, ride to Washington, D.C. on, on bicycles. Uh, more than twenty-eight hundred police officers and participants from all over the world took part in the event. The primary purpose of the Police Unity Tour is to raise awareness that more than twenty-two thousand law enforcement officers have died in the line of duty. The secondary purpose is to raise funds for the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial and Museum. The officers, uh, from Lacy Township Police Department rode this year in remembrance of Sergeant Richard Samuel Howard III of the Kissimmee Police Department in Florida, Officer Matthew Scott Baxter of Kissimmee Police Department in Florida, Detective Misotos Familia of the New York City Police Department, Detective Sean Matthew Suter of Baltimore City Police Department in Maryland, and Officer Justin Michael Tierney of the Tecumseh Police Department in Oklahoma, and Detective John Stevens, uh, who is from town here, of the Ocean County Police Prosecutor's Office. This is something our, our officers, we always have, uh, handful of officers every year participate, and, and I have to say that they, they do a tremendous job, uh, you know, not only the ride itself is a tremendous undertaking, but, uh, you know, what they do for these families and what they bring to the entire, uh, organization is, is tremendous, and we should all be very proud of them. If you've seen them on the streets, certainly mention to them, you know, uh, that you saw, you know, what they did, and thank them for their services. It is a really great thing. Uh, the only other thing I would talk, uh, touch on, like, uh, Tim said, Memorial Day Parade on Monday, um, you'll, if, if it's raining, we'll probably, you know, hear early that morning whether it's canceled or not, but the ceremony out at the, um, uh, park next door will go on either way, so if the rain comes, you can't, you know, we can't participate in the parade, please make an effort. Bring your umbrella, come on out, and, you know, honor all the men and women that have truly fought over the years, over the decades, you know, to provide us with the freedom. We're all gonna enjoy over the weekend, and, uh, so many people aren't here, you know, to be able to do that anymore, so. Remember those, those individuals and their families in, in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, I did sign Tim up next year for the Unity Tour as a representative of the committee. Keep writing, buddy.
You, you and Jim rob the bike, Ben, you and I together, pal. You go for five hours, and I go for five hours. How's that?
Who's next, Tim?
Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm definitely not gonna talk about Deadpool.
Deadpool was so well last time.
Um, now, I just wanna mention that the annual book sale at the Lacy Library will be held all day on Wednesday, January sixth, and Thursday, January seventh, and Friday till eight, uh, on Janu, uh, I'm sorry, did I say January or June?
Yes, you did.
June sixth, June seventh, until one on June eighth. This is the main fundraiser for the Friends of the Library, and I hope, um, everyone will be able to, uh, attend it. And, uh, since I'm talking about the library, I'd like to say a few words about our, our branch manager, Nancy Voightko. Nancy has recently announced, uh, that she'll be leaving Lacy soon to take another job in the county. Um, during her five years here, Nancy has brought much energy and goodwill to the work she has done. Everyone who visits there knows of her dedication to make a good library even better, and I just wanna wish her the best of luck in her new position. I also wanna, uh, mention that we had, uh, had, we had a chance to attend the Exelon Stakeholder Meeting this morning. Um, they just, as was mentioned earlier, they recently built a Hall of Memories. Uh, it's very interesting if anybody's a chance to go take a look. Um, I encourage all residents to, to, um, you know, make time out to just see what, um, what has occurred there over the past fifty years that plans been here. Um, and Exelon is also, it's September seventeenth, they are shutting that plant off, um, turning the key and shutting it off. Um, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Steve, just tell the people where the, um, museum is.
Yeah, the museum is located, uh, before you get to the main entrance of the power plant, it's the, uh, access road, where is the location? It's the access, it's hard to describe, right after the, it's actually right on the Oyster Creek, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, um, right past the gas transformer station. You would make that right towards what they used to call the education center.
Yeah, on the horseshoe, as soon as you.
It's where they have their, open their, um, annual community information night.
Yeah, it's pretty far back there, but, um, yeah, they have a bunch of, uh, educational buildings and meeting, meeting buildings. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commandment, Curatolo?
Mayor, thank you. Uh, like my colleagues up here, I want to, uh, recognize the sacrifice of the families who've fallen. Uh, as liaison to the Veterans Commission, I wanna thank them for, uh, the work that they've done, uh, really since New Year's. I'm trying to help them plan the parade and be a part of it. Uh, it's a robust and, uh, well-attended Veterans Commission we have here in Lacy Township. Uh, I would encourage any veteran, uh, that can hear me or see me right now on television, uh, call six nine three eleven hundred and ask for when our next meeting is. You're well invited, uh, actual military folks that are active right now, as well as veterans. So to all those soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, Coast Guard men and women, thank you for your sacrifice. Uh, we'll be mustering over at Lacy United Methodist Church at nine-thirty, stepping off on Monday morning at ten A.M. So, uh, it's, it's always a very well-attended and somber event, uh, at, in our town. And so, again, we're very, very thankful, but special thanks to, uh, not only the Veterans Commission. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, uh, the Elks, uh, who helped this year, Facebooked the event, uh, to so many hundreds of people throughout the township, or Ramonte, uh, the chairman, chairwoman of American Ascent over at the Elks, along with so many other Elks. We all mention the Elks up here for the work that they continue to do, uh, throughout our township all the time, not only on holidays. Uh, I'd like to also mention the Home Depot. Each year, um, people may not know, but, uh, the flags that line the entire Lacy Road and the flags for tomorrow evening, uh, when we lay the new flags at Good Love Cemetery, and we renew those flags each year annually. Uh, they come from the Home Depot. And so, in the last five years, I estimated probably in excess of six thousand flags. Uh, we get around between nine and twelve hundred each year. Uh, we get, uh, a few less this year, uh, but for the support. I mean, the Veterans Commission is not funded, and there's no line on them in the budget for them, so everything starts with them and ends with them. Uh, and so, a lot of them, I'm sure, are reaching into their pockets, uh, and we imagine Memorial Day without any flags. So I wanna say thank you to Home Depot. They've been a great core, um, a gr, a great corporate citizen in our town, and I'm very grateful for them. I, uh, would close with, I often have comments about the police up here. I have one closing, uh, comment about the Citizen Emergency Response Team. I was at a meeting, uh, earlier today at the county. Uh, I found out that a lot of the SERP teams in all our municipalities in Lacy as well be engaging, um, not only in CPR training, but in training on how to approach, uh, folks with special needs, disabilities, and autism as well. So, I mean, I talk often about the police and the ancillary groups that support the police, having different roles and stepping out of the law enforcement role into other non-traditional roles. This is a good example of that. It's at no cost to the taxpayer, and, uh, the people in the SERP team are valued members of our community. There are a lot of them in Seabreeze, uh, community and all around our town. I'd like to thank them publicly now as well. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, last week I had, I had the privilege of doing Career Day at Fork River Elementary School. Um, it was kinda unique. Have, have you done it?
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
A lot of fun. Uh, I didn't know really what to do because it was third and fourth graders, so I thought, and I said, my kids, when they were third and fourth graders. I took our recycling calendar that we have, that's given, that we send out to all the residents, and I went page by page with them. And, and why I'm gonna tell you this is gonna lead to some, I got to, so first of all, the first page showed all of us, and the one young gentleman stood up and said, uh, Mayor, can I ask you a question? I said, sure. And he said, why are you the smallest one? And he said, why are you the smallest one? And I was, 'cause I'm in the middle, I was the shortest guy. I said, wow, he really notices. As we were going through, of course, we came to May, and they seen I was starting to get a little bit because our calendar has the American flag on it with the gentleman that goes and runs in our park at the five K, had it on there. And I explained to them about that, how I feel toward the veterans, how if you ever see somebody out there, whether to be with a hat on or shirt, please acknowledge them, thank them for the freedom they gave us. And I just got, my wife works at that school, and she came home and she told me that some of the teachers and everything said that their parents came back to the school and said, while they were out around town and seeing them, my son went up and shook the gentleman's hand many, anytime he seen somebody with a veteran's hat on. So that made me proud. So what the teachers do in the schools, and what we do there to go to bring something to their attention is really great. Today, I had the honor this morning of doing the mayor's scholarship meeting. We had it the day's end, it was crowded. I had the honor from Lacey Township, we had our own here, that got a thousand dollar scholarship from the Mayor's Association, Chloe Bragg, and she's going to Seton Point College. Really, yes. Yes, very bright. And I sat, was able to sit and talk with them, you know, for a while. Other than that, Memorial Day, we know the parade is on Monday, I know the weather's gonna hold out, so please come, everybody, and show your support for the veterans, how much we love them and thank them for all the service they've done, like I said before, to give us our freedom. I'll close on, everybody knows that the parks are open, please be careful out there, the children are playing, so be slow in everything you do around in parks. That's all I have, I wanna thank everybody, and I'll see everybody on Monday. Yes.
Open the floor.
Oh, open the floor, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Bill Moss, just hang around for a minute. I have a few items I just wanna bring up. Number one, on our veterans, I remind people that effective first of this month, beach badges were available. And thanks to this township, if you're a veteran, your beach badge is free. The second thing I wanna bring up is our American Legion. We recently did a color contest for our fourth and fifth graders in all of our schools. And we gave out first, second, and third prizes. Well, our second and third place winners were in the Fork River School, and our first place winner was in the Millpot School, right? Can't give you kids' names, I don't have them, but we don't, we don't wanna give your names out. But our first place winner in the Millpot School was also the first place winner in the American Legion for Ocean Carolina. There's also the sixth place winner for the state of New Jersey, which made our posts quite proud of that. Next thing I wanna bring up is, I'm here to remind and extend another invitation to all of you gentlemen tomorrow night at the cemetery. The American Legion noticed that our cemetery doesn't have an American flag, so we went out and bought a commercial solder flag, like, with the flag pole. It was installed yesterday, and we also purchased an American flag, which we tried to put up, might have it up already, but tomorrow night, we will be putting out the flags at the cemetery. Along with thirty-five Boy Scouts, and we don't know how many kids from the high school, and with the likelihood their parents will be there too. We'd like to invite you out there to see this. So you see, in fifteen minutes, it takes usually around that length of time for those kids to get all the flags on the veterans' grades out there. But it's gonna be something to see, and there'll be a lot of, like I said, there'll be a lot of parents there also. We plan on doing that around six o'clock. First thing we'll do, because we haven't had an American flag up there so long, is we're gonna go on Google to call it the colors. That'll give the kids a chance to go out, put the flags out. When they don't want the flags, then we're gonna play taps at the cemetery. And as you know, some of you may not know, we love taps here every Friday night and Sunday. We've been doing that now for almost two years. You're all invited tomorrow night, six o'clock, please.
At the Good Luck Cemetery?
Good Luck Cemetery. And another thing, it's not my place to invite, remember, we can, Miss Willi's luncheon's tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay?
Thanks, Bill.
We'll be going taps here also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Keith Stewart, Barnacle Road in Fork River. Last Tuesday, my father had a sudden cardiac arrest and he died. And I first wanna say thank you to all of you from the Police Department, Lieutenant Meehan, Sergeant Eden, Officer Resatar, and Officer Dan Rackett, Dan, oh, it's, I apologize. And the members of Lacey First Aid, Brianna Scholberg and Patty Keen were there. They worked on my father for about forty-five minutes and all this stuff, and he surpassed from his sudden cardiac arrest. But the one thing I noticed, and if many people know, I've been in TNA town for, you know, over twenty-nine years, and a lot of experience, we don't have the most up-to-date life-saving equipment like we should have. What I have here is, this is the Lucas tool. The Lucas tool is basically, it's an instrument that actually attaches to a body that a person's in a sudden cardiac arrest. So basically, what it does is it does compressions for the person. Basically, it's a heartbeat for the person for the whole time that that person's in a cardiac arrest. All of us would know that we all get fatigued during CPR and all this stuff, and if things are going on thirty or forty-five minutes and all this stuff, we know that the quality of CPR can't be as good in the forty-fifth minute as opposed to the first minute. The tool I have here is the Lucas tool. And what that does, it basically attaches to the body and it does compressions at the thirty rate of compressions for the two breaths and all this stuff throughout the whole time you're doing it. The really cool thing about the Lucas tool is, is once it's attached to the patient, it never stops unless you want it to stop. And B, while you're moving, whether it's down the stairwell, whether it's through a doorway, or in a confined area, it never stops. So if we're working with a two-man crew, basically, one man is always doing compressions with the other people, you know, do what needs to get done to save the person's sudden cardiac arrest. What I'm doing is, what Tony Monofo did fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, when we didn't have AEDs, when Tony had a sudden cardiac arrest in his shop, what did he do? Came to you guys to plead for movement. What he wanted was, he wanted AEDs to be placed in a police car, and with the ambulance. And what Tony got was every AED in a police car and an ambulance and all this stuff. Now, I understand the cost of fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars. I can't, I understand that we can't afford to have a Lucas tool in every police car, but I would encourage the township committee, or I would encourage other people that are listening, you know, whether it's developers of Lacey, or it's Exelon, or it's other agencies or other, you know, people that can donate or come up with a good cause, this is it. Because anybody can have a sudden cardiac arrest, I never thought my father at seventy would have it. So anybody could have it. I plead, anyone that listens, the township committee, if you guys can somehow come up with the money, you know, make sure that I go over first aid and Lacey First Aid gets one, so.
Can you pull that out and see if we can take a look at that?
This is something that we are exploring with the two first aid squads as we speak, so.
Okay. I didn't really ask permission from anybody to kinda go up, I was kinda going on my own 'cause I promised with my, you know, my father casting that this would be my initiative that I might do to kinda move this along. So basically, this would actually go and beat the person that's actually having CPR, this would go and beat, and this would basically attach right here. So basically, as attached, this would basically be what's doing the compressions the whole time.
Okay.
And like I said, what's really nice about it is, up here, you know, if it's unfortunate when someone's deceased, they obviously don't have art movement, arts can go up there and all this stuff, so it really helps us whenever we're moving people downstairs, or we're moving them anywhere and all this stuff. It gives us the most rapid way of removing somebody and all this stuff to get them to the hospital or whatever. But this, more or less, once it gets attached, unless we want it to stop, it never stops. So it's always giving you thirty compressions to two breaths. And likewise, if you're on your forty-fifth minute of CPR, it's giving you just as good CPR in the first minute as it's giving you forty-fifth. Where I know, I mean, the times I've done it, forty-five minutes-
You're sweating, the peg is, you're taking your time, yeah.
So it's an excellent piece of equipment and all this stuff. It's something that, you know, I know Ware Town First Aid, and this is, who actually let me, you know, borrow it today, Ware Town First Aid has had it for probably five or six years now, at least.
And what do they cost?
Between fifteen and sixteen thousand dollars. You know, Ware Town First Aid has had, they've had countless saves. So, you know, if just one save, it's fifteen thousand dollars, it's a drop in the bucket. So I really wanted to come out and just kinda make everybody aware that the tool's out there, and just what kinda benefit it can get to the township, to the all the residents and all this stuff, so.
But we are looking into it, just so you know, yeah, it's definitely-
Absolutely. You know, I'd love to see one of the developers to step up, you know? So, you know, they're developing their homes and all this stuff, and they're creating more attacks on the first aid and police and everyone else, I would hope that they would be able to step up. Fine fifteen thousand dollars and all this stuff, maybe next month gives a call, you know, get him purchased and get an ambulance and all. So. Any other questions?
No, thank you for the demonstration, actually.
Thank you.
Keith, I just wanna say, you know, I'm so sorry for you, my women and I were away, but I know Linda's out with your wife tonight. I'm sorry, your mom tonight. You know, your dad was so involved in this community over the last forty years, and I, when I got the call that morning, I was absolutely blown away. I mean, between his involvement in the schools, his volunteering schools, board programs, yeah, I was involved with him years ago in the coaching when you were a little guy, and you know, he, there wasn't a person in his community that did more than Terry that never looked for any credit. He was just, he was an awesome hero from day one all the way forward, you know? I'm very proud of all he did and being involved with them, and I can only imagine.
He was acting on the first aid for a very small stint, too.
Yeah.
He tried everything.
Yes, he did, yes.
But he would give his heart and soul for any cause he got involved, and he was a very special man.
Thanks, Derek.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry for you.
Yeah, very sorry for you, Bill.
Thank you.
So, there's an intersection, Jesse Aaron Strobl, there's an intersection, East Railroad Avenue and Station Drive. It's actually across the street where the rail trails being, it's behind it and then there, but-
So it's that portion of railroad that goes into Lakeview Court? Is that what you're talking about?
Before that, 'cause there's one stop sign at that, it's Station Drive, you know-
Station Drive comes up and then there's the T that goes-
Not the Station Drive from Route Nine, you know how it continues?
You're talking about the Station Drive that goes into the pines and eventually turns into Lakeside Drive, which comes out to Deerhead?
Right, exactly.
Okay, so you're talking about the T there, you come up, you have railroad avenue, you have the rail trail, and then it tees off to, I guess, the other Station Drive?
Yeah, it's strange.
Yes, I get you, yeah.
Well, I just mean, if you're turning left off of Station Drive-
Uh-huh.
'Cause that speed limit's like thirty-five, so people are driving thirty-five down there. And then if you're on East Railroad Avenue, you're turning left onto Station Drive, neither of those people have stop signs.
All right, I'll take a look at it. Simple thing?
Cool. Okay.
Anybody else?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.